Okay, you're good.
All right, thank you. Okay, good evening. Call to order, the Wall Township Board of Education's special meeting for Thursday, September 10th, 2020. Please stand for the flag salute and also remain standing for just a moment of silence in memory of everyone who was lost on 9/11 and unfortunately, the first responders that are still passing to this day because of that tragic day. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Smythe, sunshine statement and roll call, please.
This is the Wall Township Board of Education meeting, which adequate notice under the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by notice in the CoStar, notice to the Asbury Park Press, Township Clerk's Office, and all Wall Township public schools, and in the Board Administration office on September 3rd, 2020. I'll take a roll call. Mr. Garts?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. Krupa?
I'm here.
Ms. Mangan?
Here.
Mr. Nasser? Mr. Sanflippo?
He has an excused absence.
Ms. Skites?
She also has an excused absence.
Mr. Wondrack? Mr. Adenizio?
Here. Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open up for public comment on any agenda item that we will be voting on this evening.
Hi, this is Betsy Cross. I think you should let people know that your meeting is not being live on YouTube because how do people know this? For people that just watch it on YouTube, you should have sent a quick email out because I don't think it's right to now just do it this way. And then you just posted this agenda at what, like 3:51? I mean, how is Chris having an excused absence when he just signed a document today? So how does he have an excused absence? He just signed some type of agreement that Gail also signed? I mean, so now Ken, I don't know where he is because he didn't say anything. Is he not there? Or is he just in the dark? I mean, you didn't say anything, Ralph, so does he have an excused absence or is he just not on the call because he knows another call's going on? You need to mention that. Mr. Scorillo, the attorney, I'm glad you're on the call. I just did open the attorney bills for July and August, so hopefully Brian will email them to me today. I think-
He will not be able to email you the August bills because they are not completed.
They have not been submitted yet. Oh, all right. I think if it's 40 days like the last one, then today would be the 40th day. So, you know, as long as it's on schedule, our last attorney, you know, would be weeks late and then, you know, we couldn't see the bills. So, you know, hopefully, you know, whatever the contract says, if you get the bills in on time. I am a little concerned about these executive minutes, a lot of redactions. It says you're in attorney-client privilege with an ongoing investigation, NJSA. So if that has to do with the trailers, we've really got to get this moving here. This has been a year. I'm so disappointed in Brian destroying the trailers and then releasing the documents. Yet he had almost a year to return them.
Ms. Cross, to clarify, Mr. Smythe did not destroy the trailers. So that is false.
The BOE destroyed the trailers before you gave the documents. That's the problem.
Okay, and Ms. Cross, that is absolutely false, so please continue.
What are you talking about? He returned the papers.
Yes, Ms. Cross.
This public comment is for agenda action items, which-
You are correct. I apologize. So Ms. Cross, do you have any questions on the, or comments on the agenda this evening?
I didn't get to look at it, so I was thinking maybe you had some more bills or executive minutes or something. I honestly didn't get a chance to look at it.
So then you don't have anything to offer?
Mr. Scorillo, I would like to be sure you're carefully looking at these documents that Mr. Smythe returned after he destroyed the trailers.
All right, Ms. Cross, that is not on the agenda for now.
It should be on the agenda. It's been a year. People are not comfortable with-
So Ms. Cross, the final time, do you have any questions on this agenda?
I do. Parents, some parents do not have a comfort level, myself included, sending a child back to Wall during a pandemic when we can't get answers on the central school trailers.
Hey, Ms. Cross, that has nothing to do with the agenda items, once again.
Sure it does. You got lots of people that you're hiring now.
What number on the agenda is that? Oh, it's not, thank you. Okay, Ms. Cross, your final time. Do you have questions on this agenda? Yes or no?
I would like my answers to my questions regarding the mercury. You didn't answer them the other day.
Okay, Ms. Cross, that is not part of this. All right, Ms. Cross, thank you very much. Your time is up.
Mr. Scorillo, I look forward-
Is there anybody else for public comment on the agenda items we will be voting on this evening?
Ralph, may I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
The YouTube stream is now going.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Clay.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. All right, seeing none, closing public comment. We move on to number six. The Township Board of Education, the Wall Township Education Association.
Mr. Adenizio, you broke up for me on reading it, so you may want to repeat it.
I'm sorry. Could I have a motion on item number six on the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Garts, could I have a second? Andy, second. Mr. Krupa? Mr. Smythe, roll call, please.
Mr. Garts?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Krupa?
Yes.
Ms. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
I will abstain because I have a family member that is part of the union. Number seven, could I have a motion on the approval of the Human Resources Report?
Ralph, before we do that, could I make a statement on that?
Yes.
Okay, so in looking that over, and again, I understand-
Wait, hold on one second, Mr. Hall, I'm sorry.
Typically, what we should have is in a second, and then we can have discussion?
Yes. Sorry.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Garts, could I have a second? Mr. Krupa, second? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hall.
Okay, well, again, I appreciate the fact that, you know, normally, you know, I've been somebody who doesn't believe that, you know, the agenda should really change much after the Friday, being that, you know, I don't believe it's fair to the public, but in this particular case, obviously, I don't think we had a choice. I kind of want to make sure the public understands that this was something that, you know, with the late, you know, hiring of people and getting all the ducks in a row, you know, the one we put out on Friday had a lot to be determined, so a lot of this is filling in that stuff. So it's not exactly all new. It was out there, it was just didn't know the names of the people that were going to be on it. So you're not talking about a whole new agenda, you're only talking about, you know, a couple of names being placed in as opposed to just being blank. But that being said, I did want to bring up a couple of items that I think are mistakes on this report, and I don't know if Brian can double check me on that, but in going through it, I was concerned when I looked at the end of the agenda where you do the resolutions. And I don't know if you were just cookie cuttering it and, you know, templating it, but there was a lot of ones that said, "As a teacher of third grade virtual format." Actually, there were four of them. And based on our conversations the other day, I know that we're not having four virtual third grade teachers. So I went back to the spreadsheet earlier in the report, in the Human Resources spreadsheet report, and I tick and tied the names together and realized that Sarah starts with a K, I can't pronounce it, I'm bad at that, in the spreadsheet form, she's a virtual first grade teacher, but in a resolution, she's listed as a third grade teacher. Also, in Angela, the resolution at the bottom says, again, "Third grade virtual," but in the spreadsheet, she's listed as a special ed teacher. So again, I'm assuming that they're not all third grade, because if that was the case, it'd all be, there'd be four of them. But I did want to bring that up and make sure that, you know, we're not hiring four third grade virtual teachers. And that maybe, like I said, when you were preparing the resolutions, you just kind of copied one off to the other, just filled in the names and just, you know, that slipped by. So I just wanted to, you know, amend that motion if we're going to do that, to make sure that that is properly noted in the resolution that actually gets filed away.
Mr. Clay, you are correct, and that was my error. So that was not Mr. Smythe's error.
Okay, well, again, like I said, I know the haste of getting this out in time, and like I said, we're fighting, you know, fighting the, you know, all the different issues. So again, not the end of the world, but I just did want to bring that up to your attention. I know it would have gotten caught eventually, but better to do it now than after the fact.
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing it up.
Anybody else? No? And I just want to say typically, appointments like this are usually done in August, right before school starts. For my seven years on the board, we've always had last minute hires, and as everybody knows, this year is very unique because we are essentially running a separate school, the virtual school. And certainly, a lot of hard work went into that, so thank you to our administration. So we have a motion and a second. Mr. Smythe, roll call, please. You're on mute.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Krupa?
Yes.
Ms. Mangan?
Yes.
Mr. Garts?
Yes.
Mr. Adenizio?
Yes. Thank you.
Again, can I interrupt for a moment, just for the members of the public and for the official record? The charts, as they appear in the HR report, are accurate. The resolutions, which were attached as attachments or exhibits, need to be adjusted. Those will be adjusted, so when the final minutes are done, they will be corrected to match the charts.
Thank you, Mr. Scorillo. Okay, this time, we will open up public comment. You have five minutes. Good evening. Tom?
Yep, hello.
Just your name for the record, please.
Tom Rack from Wall. You've heard from me before. I just have one question on the hires. Are all of the virtual teachers new hires? Or is this an approval of a move from on-prem teachers, current existing teachers, and just an approval of redirection?
Dr. Handerhand?
Yes, I'll take it. The current, the virtual teachers, the all-virtual teachers are a combination of seasoned teachers, of Wall Township teachers, and new hires. This evening's agenda speaks to the new hires, not the current Wall staff that has been assigned.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hello?
Yeah, good evening. Just your name, please.
Sunisa Kincavez. How are you guys doing today?
Good, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. I actually just also have another question about the new hires. I'm just a little bit confused because on the agenda that I see, I know Mr. Hall says a lot of the "to be determined" has a name, but for me, what I'm seeing, there's still no names there, so I'm just wondering-
Oh, are you there?
That means that you do not have, like, actual- Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you cut out for a second. So just a question for you. The agenda you're looking at, was it one from the other night? Or is it-
No, I mean, it's still from today, and it still says that, you know, the fourth grade teachers, one is still "to be determined," and also a first grade teacher. So I'm wondering if that means that you don't have an actual person hired for that. I'm just a little nervous because Monday, I know the teachers are supposed to report, so I'm just, if I could just have a little clarification on that to make me just, me and the other parents feel a little bit more comfortable?
It sounds like an old agenda, but Dr. Handerhand?
Okay.
It is an old agenda. We have been interviewing, and we actually have staffed, we have the all-virtual school completely staffed, and the agenda was updated late this afternoon, so there are no TBDs on the current agenda. So if you go to the website, you should be able to see the names.
Okay, so I'll have to go look again. And then just one other question is, will the virtual parents, will we also have a back-to-school night? Are you planning that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You have a good evening.
Hello?
Good evening.
Hi, it's Samantha Bassett. Good evening. I just have one question and then two comments. Are siblings going to be seated together on the buses this year, or are they going to be spread out on the bus by grade like they were, you know, in previous years? And then, there was an article today about a student in Little Silver who attended school while their test results were pending. The student then, on the second day of school, tested positive, and now the entire class is excluded while they work with the health department. Is the Board of Education considering a policy encouraging students and/or staff to stay home while they have pending test results for COVID, instead of coming into school to avoid this type of issue happening? And then lastly, I just want to thank our teachers and staff. As many districts in New Jersey are finding, you can't open schools without these people, and we're in the position we're in to open in person in less than a week because of the leadership of the WTEA advocating for and addressing the legitimate concerns of their membership with the administrators and the Board of Education to create the conditions where they feel comfortable returning. Excuse me. Dr. Handerhand, you mentioned on Tuesday a list of questions from the staff members, and you went through and addressed some of them, and I would just hope that all these questions would be able to be worked through before the teachers report on Monday, as this would really start a very different type of school year off on the right foot, and I think that's what we all want.
Thank you. Dr. Hander, do you know the answer to the busing question? Can siblings sit together?
Well, I'll address that, Mr. Adenizio. To the extent possible on the school buses, we are looking to social distance the students. However, with regard to siblings living in the same household, or students living in the same household, there's no requirement to social distance. Yes, they will be, but that's going to be viewed on a case-by-case basis, depending on the bus, the number of students, and the students themselves, whether they desire to or not. But some of that, you know, leeway, we leave with the school bus driver and the circumstances on their bus.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Cross?
Is the microphone on?
Yes.
Was the microphone on that whole time before you? I didn't turn it off. I mean, I didn't turn it on.
No, no, I unmuted.
I normally have to unmute it. Were you listening to my phone call, Mr. Adenizio? Or were you listening?
No, you had a little red microphone on your name, so nobody heard anything you said.
I'm glad to see the attorney, Mr. Scorillo, is here. I know we had another person there on Tuesday, so I hope we're going to see him going forward. What gets me concerned is all these July executive minutes, we have a different attorney at most of them. And like I've said, the central school trailers, you know, I hope he's spending, you know, quite a few hours on this. There's some pretty disturbing things that you see from the information that Mr. Smythe only returned after he demoed the trailers. So feel free to reach out to me, Mr. Scorillo, because now that I see all these redactions in the July minutes, and it looks like you're talking to Mr. Gross now, and, you know, it says Board Attorney, Mr. Merlino, you know, we need some consistency here. Now you have the problem with the mercury in the high school, and Mr. Adenizio rudely was cutting me off, would not answer where the mercury was in the concrete, wasn't in the soil. It's outrageous what's happening here. So parents are very concerned how things are being handled because they're not being handled transparent. You don't shove hundreds of pages of mercury testing at 4:00 on Tuesday and tell the parents, like Mr. Adenizio said, to read it myself. I guess he's on Facebook right now because Tuesday, he looked like he was on Facebook the entire time, not paying attention at all to the meetings.
You're wrong, Ms. Cross, as usual.
Everybody can watch the video themselves. Mr. Hall, when you see mistakes in the agenda, let Ms. Handerhand know. Don't do it online. Mr. Adenizio, you're the board president, you should have went over this with a fine-toothed comb. Dr. Handerhand shouldn't be doing all of this herself. I feel bad that nobody caught that before, and you bring it out on the phone call. It's outrageous. And like I said, how is Chris signing documents on the 10th, but he can't be here for this meeting? You can't be shoving up agendas at 3:51 and voting on them. It's outrageous. Every other school in New Jersey isn't full of excuses like Wall Township. So it is more than frustrating. So if the attorney can give an update on the central school trailer situation, where you're at with that report and your addendum, I would like to know it tonight on the record. And on the mercury, please go over where the mercury is and what you're doing. If you're looking to remove the floor, leave the floor, test more concrete, I don't want to read 300 pages of mercury reports. I want to hear you say it on the record and let the parents know what you're doing. We're paying for these reports. We need you to tell us what you're doing. It's outrageous what happened at Central School. I still don't know how it happened. Did a plumber install the valve? Was it done internal, the valve? Where are you going for the insurance if it was a plumber? Or, you know, are you going after the plumber for the insurance? You know, this money is not growing on trees in Wall Township, and we just can't keep spending it like it's monopoly. So I'd like an update on, you know, I just got the executive minutes back. I'm sure they were late because I put them in on August 28th, which was probably the 27th, and I just got them back today, of course, from Mr. Smythe after 4:00 today. So it says you're redacting a number of items due to attorney-client privilege and an ongoing investigation, NJSA 47-1-A3A. So this will be looked over very carefully to see what is redacted and if it was allowed the way you have it, because it's July 14th, July 21st, July 23rd, and July 28th. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ralph, could I respond?
Yes, let me, just one second, Mr. Hall. Is there anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, closing public comment. Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I don't disagree with Betsy on the one point. If I had caught this earlier, I certainly would have reached out to Tracy and to Brian, but, you know, I basically got out of work at like quarter of 5:00. I usually, I'm pretty good at going through the agenda. I read it pretty closely. I caught it. You know, at that point, I felt it was too late to kind of let up to change it, certainly. It wasn't going to put it up, they weren't going to take it down and put it up again. So, you know, again, I will take that one, you know, take that as criticism with, you know, saying that I probably should have let them know, so I'll agree with Betsy on that one. But again, it wasn't a situation where I was trying to hide it from them. I just only really literally saw it, you know, 20 minutes before we went live. So again, I apologize to both Brian and Tracy for doing it in public, but, you know, again, so just want to make sure that we're clear that it wasn't like I saw it for three days and then sprung it on them at the last second, so.
Thank you. Mr. Scorillo, did you have something?
I do have something. I'm going to ask us to come back to the two agenda items. I apologize, we moved along a little quicker than I thought we were going to, but both of, I'm not as concerned about the memorandum of agreement because that does not require a five-vote majority, but all of the personnel items in the second resolution require a vote of five members of this Board of Education. The memorandum of agreement only requires a majority of those voting, so that passes with four of the five voters in favor of it and one abstention. But we have a problem with the personnel matters as they require five votes. Mr. Adenizio, you're not, I appreciate you're acting, you know, acting in such a way where you are outlining your conflict and are not voting on those personnel items, but the reality is that you're not precluded from voting on those personnel items because the individual personnel items do not impact your spouse. So I'm going to ask the board, I'm going to ask Brian, do you have a question?
Mr. Adenizio voted on the HR report, to the firm, so there were five for the HR report.
Thank you, thank you. You guys moved it a little fast, and I thought you were moving, and I was going through this, and I was checking Mr. Hall's corrections on the additional, on the additional resolution. So if Mr. Adenizio voted favorably, then we're in good shape.
Yes, yeah, I abstained from number six on the agenda.
Okay. And I do know that the board appreciates kind of the whirlwind that has been the opening of this school year, that in a matter of eight or 10 days, we have dealt with the difficulties at Central School, we have dealt with the daily applications or requests by staff members for accommodations, and it's not a problem unique to Wall Township. Boards of Education have been meeting all of this week, making adjustments. One of our clients last night made an adjustment where they opened virtually this week to go back to in-person on Monday. So they literally made a decision on a Thursday evening to switch the entire format of the delivery of educational services for the following Monday. So while the health crisis has created times that we have not seen before in public, it's also had a rippling effect through the opening of school. And no one likes to make mistakes on resolutions, but Mr. Hall, you were right, they were putting together pieces of the resolution as they moved through this, and it looks like they repeated the third grade a couple of times. So I just needed to comment on that, and I wanted to make sure that our votes were appropriately tallied. So Brian, thank you for that.
Okay, this time, if there's nothing else, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Ralph, could I just say something?
Yes, Mr. Krupa.
I just want to compliment the administration and the people that were involved, you know, all aspects of the district in terms of the open forum and, what you call it, Town Hall Meeting, that's what it was called. I'm looking forward to more of those in better times, on different topics, please. I'd like to be involved with that, please. And there are a number of board members that were present, whether you could see that we were there or not, and I know there were statements made that we weren't there. However, my back is still hurting from sitting through that the other night. So anyway, there is a limit to our participation in different roles, and that's what people need to understand. Joe, I'm glad you did what you did. I know it was done in the spirit of everybody's favorite word, transparency, so no problem there, and thank you for doing that. And Mr. Scorillo, I was smiling because I had the same question answered. Thank you for bringing that up.
If that's all, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion seconded by Mr. Garts, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Good night, all.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.